I call it in your order, all of us pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full agenda tonight, and we have two full carafes of coffee, thanks to Councilor Shawn over there. Proud it by Belinda, I think, or was it Jennifer? I forget.
No, actually, it was his idea.
Oh, okay, all right.
Proud it by my own need for coffee vans.
Okay, we do have a full agenda tonight. I'll try and make my report as brief as possible. I attended the committee advisory council meeting, not much coming out of there. Just a little bit of an update on the timeline of the building project over there. And I think we'll be talking about our work session, and that's one of the things we might put on there. A note that we have two items on the agenda here to address at specified times. We've been asked to do that at 6:15 to talk about the request for reasonable accommodation, and at 6:45 to address the very complex wage study that we are going through. Towards the end of the meeting, we'll be going to close session two times. One to going into session with our attorney in regards to threat litigation, and then once to go into discuss an offer on real property that's described on the second page of the agenda there. And just to note, we have the Chamber of Commerce annual meeting and banquet coming up on Saturday evening. And if you are interested, the Chamber has extended invitation to delegation from the Liberian community down in the New Hope, New Brighton, Brooklyn Center area to come out and talk about the sister city relationship. Haven't heard if they are sending someone, but they have been invited. That's my report. And Councilmember LeBeau?
I had a budget and finance meeting, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hersberg?
I was at the same finance and budget meeting, and we just got done with Public Works.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ranky?
We had a policies and procedures meeting, and we should be expecting to see some draft ordinances from that in the next coming weeks.
Wonderful. Councilmember Gilmore?
Liquor board meeting, a policy and procedure meeting, and I was honored to attend retirement for six of our firefighters on Saturday night in the American Legion.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Then we do have one department head report, and that is from our fire chief, Andy Soini.
Thank you, Your Honor. To start off with, we had, I'll go over the calls for the 2019. We had forty medical calls or assists. We had six car accidents. We had eleven fire calls, eight false alarms or alarms of some sort, eight gas leaks, nine times we were canceled en route for whatever reason, car accidents, things like that. We had two different power lines down, and we had two rescue calls, and we were given mutual aid four different times, total of ninety calls through the year. Let's see, new hires. We have two, three new hires right now, taking firefighter one and two. They will be finishing up. I want to say it's the end of April, first of April, somewhere in that area. We have two positions that were available to start hiring for at this time, and interviews are starting this week, Thursday, and I'll continue interviews on Tuesday of next week. And lastly, basically, some of the trainings we've covered over the last few months. We trained on search and rescue with the Stearns County Sheriff's Department with the dog and their drone. We also met with the search and rescue team for Minnesota, and we worked on extrication equipment, and we were working with our side by side. So we drove that quite a bit, tried to get some hours built in there. Any questions or... Yes, sir.
Are calls up from last year or about the same?
Were actually a little bit lower than last year. Last year, we were just over a hundred. I believe it was a hundred and two or a hundred and five, and we're at ninety this year. So we're kind of in the ballpark.
Kind of interesting to me, anyway, you had a call this morning, and it was kind of close to the time school was starting. And, you know, every time, you know, I think of you guys going by that front of that elementary school.
Yeah, typically, our process is to go straight up to the light. And when we see a school patrol crossings and stuff there, we always go straight. But this morning, we didn't see anybody out yet. So at that point, we looked at ourselves and said, oh, oh, slow her down and get through there and move on, so.
Fortunately, it wasn't a real bad accident from what I understand, so, yeah, okay. Any other questions? Ron?
Well, I just got a couple items.
Oh, you got a couple items. I asked for questions, not items.
Not items.
No other questions? All right then, you can have a couple items.
All right. First, I'd like to remind residents that it is their responsibility, if we are so lucky, is to have a sidewalk. I know it's been tough with all the weather we've had, but please get them cleaned. And then also, this time of year, park reservations generally start to increase. So just a reminder that Veterans Park is available, and as is the gazebo. Thank you.
Okay. Not only sidewalks, but long as the chief is here, hydrants too. I know that if it gets too bad, we'll come around, but it's nice to have residents. And I have a sidewalk and a fire hydrant, so.
Absolutely. If you can turn around around a fire hydrant, it's a huge help for us.
Mm-hmm. Just in case. All right. Thank you very much. Then we have the consent agenda, which include approving the minutes from those meetings as listed on page one. The vouchers on page two totaling $603,115.47. And then a resignation of Ron Meyer from the planning board effective December 31st, and to appoint Katie Westlin to the planning board immediately, and this passes, and thanking Ron for his service.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ranky, seconded by LeBeau to approve the consent agenda discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that carried? Okay, then, first item on our action list here is the 2020 fee schedule. That has been out for review and open now for discussion or approval.
I just have one on the second item, dog and cat. They did go up, but I don't see on date approved for nineteen. Other than that, I'll make the motion to approve the 2020 fee schedule.
I'll second.
Motion by Hersberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the 2020 fee schedule. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that carried? And the next item, cable consulting from Rudy Viall. He is dropping his a little bit, or his consulting fees. He's still my heart.
Move to approve the amount of $2,400 for the 2020 calendar year from Rudy Viall for cable consulting. Second.
Motion by Ranky, seconded by Gilmore to approve that. Any discussion? He has been doing that for several years and has been doing a very good job about finding equipment and other things, so. Anything else? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that carried? And the started getting into our administrative stuff for the year. The listing of the conference attendances that are pre-approved, so we don't have to deal with them one at a time. Those are the League of Minnesota Cities, conferences, regional meetings, loss control workshops, Mayor's Conference, Stearns County Misbelieve, and the Clerks and Finances.
One change?
One change?
June 24th to 26th, 2020 is in St. Paul, not in Duluth.
That's true, yeah.
Does this include our fall and spring in March legislative?
And that does not include the legislative.
Are they doing that?
One which should probably be on here too.
But we've always gone to the winter, and there's one coming up. Now they changed the name. Elected Leaders Institute Advanced Program. But those should be.
Those are the training sessions should be on there. You're right.
Could we change the motion so as all LMC meetings and trainings?
Sure could.
So I'll make a motion to approve attendance, registration, mileage, user expenses per day, city administrator, any city councilman, and following events. All LMC trainings and meetings, the Mayor's Conference, Stearns County Municipal League Meetings, and the MCF away Clerks Conference?
Second.
Okay, motion by Gilmore, seconded by Hersberg to approve the attendance as listed here of the all LMC meetings, conferences, Mayor's Conference, Stearns County Misbelieve Meetings, and the MCF Clerks Conference, which probably won't happen this year, but you never know what might happen. But anyway, so that's the motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions?
For those who have been around longer, does it make sense to go to the annual conference every year for all council members? Or should that be in every other? I just ask because that's quite a big expense for us to be.
That is up to the council to do, other than, you know, we try, they offer several different seminars and programs that we try and let them go to.
It's been beneficial to go into it, okay.
Anything else? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that carried? And the next item we have time here is looking for a motion to approving paying the monthly lease payments to the liquor store, $1,828 plus $10 per month for the signed electricity.
Remove to pay the 2020 liquor store lease and monthly installments of $1,828 plus $10 per month for signed electricity from the 105 Liquor Fund payable to Teal's Management?
Second.
Motion by Ranky, seconded by Gilmore to approve the 2020 liquor store lease payments as listed there. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that carried? And we have the annual IRS mileage rate to approve at fifty-seven and a half cents per mile effective January 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve the city mileage rate of .575 per mile effective January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Ranky to approve the city mileage rate at fifty-seven and a half cents per mile as listed there. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that carried? And then the election of the mayor pro tem, and previously, that has been Councilor LeBeau.
I'll make motion to leave Councilor LeBeau as mayor pro tem.
I will second that if the councilman wishes to remain in that position.
Yes.
All right, okay. We do have a motion by Hersberg, seconded by Ranky to elect Councilor LeBeau as mayor pro tem. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And carried? And one minute left here. Official depositories for city funds. That's Resolution 2020-01 designating those.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2020-01 designating depository of funds, designating a chief financial officer, and establishing authority to act.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Ranky to approve Resolution 2020-01 designating depositories of funds, designate a chief financial officer, and establishing authority to act as on page 24. Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And that carried? All right, it is 6:15, and we've been asked to have this item number F under whole business addressed at 6:15. We have representatives here. This is a request for reasonable accommodation from Recovery Center LLC. Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And we have representatives from there. This has been a long process. It's new to us. We've had some bumps in the road, but we'll see what happens here tonight. And we have some additional information that has been presented to clarify things. Should have been on the table before us, that May has provided for us. A lot of paper here for us tonight, so let's pull all of that out here. All right, and the request is for twelve residents rather than five, which the city allows. And basically, that's it, correct, Bill? Allow that in our own zone area.
It is. Until the material that was submitted tonight, I didn't have an understanding that it was a request for a specific number, but it does say that in the material that appears to have been submitted by the applicant tonight.
I think that may have been submitted before. It may have gotten lost in the shuffle. So it is for twelve. That is the, that is the request. I know at the last meeting, there were some questions about that. We also have information, there was a question that came up about the number of bathrooms. We have a note here from the building official as to what the actual requirement is. The only requirement for bathrooms in residential occupancy is one per dwelling. Would include a toilet, sink, and shower slash tub. In case you're wondering about the silence up here, there was a number of letters that have been submitted here to everything that has been submitted in the past through the, the hearing has been entered into the record and previously available. This is all in addition. That is the council's direction. And May is here to answer any questions. Thank you. If there's any questions, yeah, you can stay there for now.
That's fine. What is she supposed to do?
May, could I just ask you, and I don't want you to disclose anything that you think is confidential. So if I'm breaching that line, let me know. And I meant to call you back, but I've been swapped. I apologize. But part of what we have to do is determine why you need more than five people in there to make this work. So would you mind, and I've read through the letters in here about why it's important to your people, and I can assume from other things. But could you just tell us for the public record why, why this makes your program work?
Hi, I talk really loud, so I don't really even know if I need a microphone. But the reason that sober housing, period, not just for my program, but for any sober housing, requires more than one person in a bedroom is numerous reasons. But the greatest one is accountability. You know, we're trying to help people make lifestyle changes, not just stay sober. And a lot of that means law-abiding, creating structure, routine, schedules, you know, bedtimes, curfews, establishing healthy sleep schedules. The female's house in particular, I might need two in a room specifically for that because almost every female I've ever worked with in this field has significant trauma history. They're victims of abuse in every type there is, and sleep is hard for them. It's hard for them to feel safe. The night times are hard, and having someone else in the room just helps with that. Even in an inpatient program, including Hazleton, you don't have an addict alone. It's not healthy. When you start getting inside your own head, and you start thinking, and your mental health kicks in, and you're struggling, it can talk you real quickly into leaving and using. So by having somebody else in the room when you're struggling or you're having a hard time, it just helps. It supports them. It allows the house to remain safer in the sense that, not, when I use the word safer, I don't mean like there's bad things going on. I just mean safer as far as mental health-wise, and that they feel safer. You know, when you're living in the lifestyle of an addiction, like a lot of our females are and have, they don't know what safety means anymore. They don't know what security means anymore. They're constantly sleeping with an eye open. They're always looking over their shoulder. They're always ready and preparing for the worst. So just by having that second person in the room provides that security. And then ultimately, it's a large house. I had our housing downtown, and with the request of the business district, they asked for me to move people to the residential, which I did. And in that process, this house came up. It was a foreclosed property. It was having a hard time selling. Had many, many looks. I don't think I've ever seen so many real estate cards in my life on the counter when I got in there, but people didn't want it. It's required a lot of work, and we've already done a lot of updates on it to increase the value. And due to the financial component of it, I need to have twelve ladies in there because most of them don't pay rent, and the overhead is excessive, so.
Could you make this work if we limited it to less than twelve?
I explained to the councilmembers that if I can't have two to a room, I mean, if we made it twelve, I feel like it would be a waste of space. I would definitely be not staying there. I have to do what's best for the people I'm serving. And they're comfortable. We've had twelve in there since October 1st. They're happy there. There's a lot of space there. And they're doing well, so. This is nationwide housing alone we have a need. It's not just for sober housing. Housing, period, is in a crisis. So I feel like it would be not fair. I mean, we got the space. Why not utilize it? And why not help as many people as we can?
Thank you. Any other questions?
May, would you agree that the definition of... Never mind, that fell apart in my head. Sorry. Sounded better before it started coming out.
You have those voices too, right?
Typically, just one. Oh, here it is. Would you agree that under the definition of, using the ADA definition of a person with a disability, that that requires the individual to be sober?
Absolutely. And anyone in my program must remain sober. You know, I name my program Recovery Center, not sobriety.
Thank you.
I know quite a bit about sober houses. Now, you can clarify this. There's a certain amount of time where the people living in these variety houses cannot work. They have to go to classes and so forth, so at that time, there's no money for rent or food or anything. Is that correct?
The first thirty days, I designed my program when I first went into this, it was five years ago. We designed the program to keep people from being able to access or utilize emergency funds through the county. If anyone knows anything about financial support through county benefits, if you're homeless and you don't have shelter, you can access emergency assistance, which is up to $800 grant. An addict or an alcoholic who's actively using or in the process of trying to abstain, we give them $800. We don't want to know what they're going to do with it next. So my program is set up so that they are not allowed to get that. Their first month they live in the house is free, and I did it so that they can't apply for county support or benefits. They're also required to not work for thirty days for the simple fact that in that thirty days, they're getting their sobriety stable. They're getting mental health stable. They're meeting with myself because I'm duly licensed in chemical health as well as mental health. They also partner with Life Seasons or whatever mental health service they want, whether it's Woodland Centers, Centure Care, wherever. And then after that thirty days, if they are doing well and they've stuck around, then they apply for work. And they are expected to either work twenty hours a week or volunteer twenty hours a week. And that's where our community service work comes in, into the community. So it's small. We have a small town. So we're struggling with keeping people busy. I have the highest numbers I've ever had in this treatment. In fact, the counties are completely floored with how many people we are providing services for. It just means that people are trying to do better. And with the opportunities that they're being provided, they are doing better, so.
What's the average length of stay for people in your sober houses?
I would say average is probably six months. I don't have a limit. That's the one thing that sets me aside from other programs is I don't tell people they can only stay for three months or six months like other programs do. I tell them as long as they're complying with the rules of the house, and there's a lot. They're welcome to stay as long as they need to, and a lot of them take advantage. I have some that have been with me for twenty months because they see it as an opportunity to continue to save money, pay delinquent child supports, pay off court fines, get their driver's licenses back, save money for cars, learn how to get car insurance and all of those things so that they can become true productive members of society versus you get six months' stay and you barely have your head on straight and love, and stable in a sobriety program in six months. So they can stay as long as they want, but average stay is about six months. And then most people that move on are moving on together. They forge relationships with other members of the house. And so they partner, you know, two or three people will move out and get an apartment together, and they'll split the cost, and they'll have that support and that relationship already. And whether that's to St. Cloud, Wilmer, or stay here in Painesville, a lot of them like staying here. Problem is, we don't have housing. There's not a lot of affordable housing in Painesville, so that's our greatest struggle. Things come in house form. Not too many one or two-bedroom apartments that people can afford, so.
You've mentioned rules, and I know the answer to this in speaking with you. But since you have the podium there, what happens if the rules are broken?
Well, everyone breaks the rules. They're all like little teenagers, and everyone breaks the rules, but they have the chance to be kicked out. Each person is dealt with differently. Depends on how significant the rule is. We don't tolerate any law-breaking behaviors. And that can be as petty as a shoplifting. I've dealt with people who think that the dollar store is free game sometimes, and then it gets back to me usually before they even get back home. And so they get kicked out. We'll deal with relapse on a case-to-case. The biggest and only number-one rule that if you violate, you're on the way out is if you bring drugs, alcohol, or any sort of paraphernalia to the property. We don't tolerate that because of the simple fact that it then jeopardizes everybody else's sobriety. It's pretty hard for someone to say no if it's right in front of you or you know it's in the next room. So I was hopeful with the dog. I've only had two people in the five years I've done this work ever have to kick them out for that reason. So I think that's pretty significant when we're dealing with hundreds of people that we've helped. So most people know that I mean business with that, and I won't tolerate it because it just jeopardizes everybody else. But there's curfews, there's check-ins, there's chores. Most of the things that most people break are the chores. They don't want to have to make beds and clean, and we have staff that walks through the house every day, seven days a week. They answer to me. I'm the primary manager of the houses. I'm the one that they do whereabouts with and do check-ins with for curfews. But staff walks through there. I have three staff that live within a block of the house. So if I have crisis or emergencies, which we haven't had yet, I got one of three I can call and be there probably faster than even RPD can get there. But because they're that close. But because they're that close. But those are our biggest rules. Most of the struggles we have there are the catty little girl struggles, right? I mean, we have 12 females living together. It's like 12 middle schoolers living together. Most of the drama that we deal with is someone used my shampoo, you know? And it's not life-altering and I just teach them how to have social skills and to get along with each other.
Since we do have some history there already, my next question is for the chief. And I did ask this the last time of incidents in relation to any of these that we have in the community because we do have a few of them.
As far as incidents, that house specifically, there's only been maybe one or two documented incidents. Doesn't mean there haven't been reports of stuff. Like nothing that's noteworthy as far as those kind of things that we can't substantiate. As far as the other homes, I mean, you know, we get the warrants. We get the stuff like that coming out of those homes. Probation violations, stuff like that. But that's happened at both, you know, whether it was when May was a serenity path or otherwise, that's happened at all of them, so.
Can I add something to that? I just want to say that I feel that we have a great relationship with the PD. I feel like they've got our back and we've got theirs. And, you know, we have keyless keypad on all of the doors. And I've always told the chief and all of his officers if they ever need to go in or want to go in, they have full access. I work with them. I feel like if anytime I feel like I need to make a call to them, I'm never going to second it. You know, if I think I need to, I know I've only made one call to this house and that was when we had, I believed, an impaired driver who brought one of the females there. And so the chief was there within seconds. And he made sure that that driver was safe. And that's all I care about is keeping people safe, so.
And I will add, Mr. Mayor, that most of the calls that we've gotten to the house of substantiated stuff have all come from me. So if not calls from other people, it's usually me calling saying she's got an issue.
Well, I was at the house yesterday, I think all of the house. Met with me and was seven or eight of the ladies that are there. And I was pretty impressed. It was very clean. Lot of improvements, like you said, have been done. So it's a big house. It was sat empty for a long time. The neighborhood had another meth house. Rumor was there might have been some of that going on in this house. I think it's a lot better with what's in there right now. And I don't take a huge family to fill that house. And that's kind of what you have there right now.
Yeah, they all function like a family. They cook together. They clean together. They look out for each other and they take care of each other, so. They're just not, they don't look like children. They just act like them sometimes.
And then explain your accountability when they're on the phone?
Which part? The whereabouts line?
Yeah, when they're calling.
Yeah, I model our program after the ISP program, which is the intensive surveillance program through Sterns County Probations and Corrections and then also through Child Protection. They have a thing called a whereabouts line, which anybody that works in those programs is required to notify those authorities their whereabouts at all times. And so when I started in this field eight years ago, I modeled our sober housing after that as well so that they would be able to have that consistency throughout those services. So every time they change location, they are expected to text me. So going to Casey's, right? Headed to the office, going to the rec center, going to St. Cloud, going to Red Lobster. You know, not that anyone gets to really ever do that, but sometimes. You know, headed to probation, right? I know where they're at at all times. And if they fail to do that, I get after them the first week and say, hey, I should know your whereabouts at all times. Because the second I don't know where people are at, it's a big indicator that they're not being responsible. And it's my opportunity as a clinician to say, hey, you know, you're here to work a program. I have a high need. I got probably a 30-person waiting list currently at this moment that would take any one of those people's spots. And I make that very clear to my clients, that your spot is valuable. Don't mess around. Because if you're not here for the right reasons, I'm happy to send you down the road and make that bed open to somebody who wants the opportunity. So they do. Most of them do. It also helps, you know, and the chief knows this as well. I had a young lady who didn't come home a couple of years ago at curfew time or at work time and she didn't do a whereabouts. And I knew she got off work at 5:00. And by 10:00, she didn't do check-ins. And I knew something was wrong because this was a girl who was very good. And the chief, of course, took me very serious. And I called him and I said, I think something seriously happened to this girl. And he followed up and sure as someone locally took that young lady to Duluth. And I have since learned from that time that she had been victimized and harmed because she's contacted me since and told me what had happened. And that makes me sad. You know, it makes me sad that I have to protect them from somebody in the community. But we have a lot of bad stuff going on everywhere, not just in Painesville, but St. Cloud and, you know, just everywhere. It's not, we're not living in a great community anymore. So we're trying to do better things, so.
We've talked, or you've talked a lot about what goes on in, you know, within the constraints of what you can. What about, now, you mentioned these people, you know, are free to go to Dollar General and about, you know, in the community. What else do they do in the community that you can count on that would help us to relate to having a larger group within, you know, one spot there?
Well, we're a 12-step program. And the 12-step program is a spiritual-based program. And it's the most effective therapy for addiction worldwide, used in 240-plus countries. You can't really be a true 12-step program if you wait until the person gets their 12-step, which is to give back and do community service and service work. And you wait till they get ready to graduate to say, good job, Jeff. Nice going now. Now head on out there and do your 12-step and good luck to you. So throughout the process and the program, and that's the beauty of having the sober housing, is I get them a lot. I see my clients a lot instead of sending them home. We see and have interaction. So they are encouraged and required to do that community service work and that volunteer work. And the Rose Center has been phenomenal in keeping people busy because it's quiet right now anywhere for employment. So we're in rural Minnesota, small Painesville, and Lenny knows that there's not a lot of work right now. So a high number of my people are doing the volunteer work to maintain their spot in the house. I don't get any sort of county assistance. I don't get any reimbursement. I don't get GRH funding. I get nothing for housing, not a penny. If people don't pay their rent, I get nothing. And currently, right now, I am thousands and thousands and thousands in the hole for housing. But I don't care because we're making a difference. And so my exchange to that is you have to do better. So my payment back is that they are doing things in the community. So the Rose Center keeps them busy. They do shoveling. They do lawn care. They do decorating. Anything that the ladies need out at the Rose Center, they do, whether it's unloading groceries, helping with moving things. We did the unity in the community events. They help at the community center with Allison at the food shelf, whether it's helping with clothes, sorting stuff, carrying stuff, unloading stuff, sorting stuff. We have several people just personally that have called us and asked us for services and help and support and they do it. We shovel the St. Stevens Church on Wendell. We have done that for several years. We'd maintenance that for Paul Bugbee and take care of that. They repaired the roof this summer because it was leaking in there. And I don't know. I like that church. I think it should be protected and taken care of. So we offered and they did it. We delivered Meals on Wheels on Thanksgiving because other people in the community didn't step up to do that. And so I rounded up volunteers to help take my clients out and we delivered all the Meals on Wheels for the people who are shut in and didn't have the option to get their Thanksgiving meal that Teal's was nice enough to put together and support. So anything anybody has, so if you have people in the community that are in need of something, including yourselves, we're there to help. They pick up trash. We keep the main street done. They shovel both sides of the one block at that end because as we all know, the one side of our block is pretty much deserted. And so they keep that all shoveled and salted and maintenance. They pick up trash along the railroad. I don't know. We try to get creative what we can do, so.
So at our last meeting that we had, my biggest question that I had was, you know, what, how do you directly relate the people in the sober house's disability to the need for this accommodation? And I also went and had a tour of the house and met with several of the people living there. And I think in your explanation and their explanation, for me, that question was answered satisfactorily that there was, there is a strong correlation between their disability and the need to have two people in each of those rooms. So I just want to thank you for that. Thank you for answering those questions. And thank you to those who spoke with me.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I also want to clarify, when I spoke here in September, I think it was the 23rd of September, I could be wrong, but it was Monday for recovery month. Addiction is killing. It's the number-one death if you're 50 or younger. One in three people are going to die from a drug-related death, whether it's as a direct result of the addiction or as an indirect result of neglect, accidents, you know, a crime or whatever. That's not okay with me. And to me, if we can serve 12 people, I feel like we should serve 12. When I had Brad come into the house, Brad Melhough, before we even purchased the house, he did a walkthrough and he said, oh, the rooms are plenty big. You could easily put three to a room. And I'm like, that would be 18 females, Brad. He said, yeah, I know. And I was like, no, thanks. 12 is plenty because females are difficult emotionally. They're not difficult behaviorally. They're difficult emotionally. There are a lot of needs. Most of my ladies in the house have lost their children. They have lost their rights to their children. They're broken. They're trying to find a purpose in their life. They're trying to figure out who they are and who they're going to be. The majority of ours are age 20 to 25, I would say, in the house. And that's who we service a lot of. Ones that we can hopefully help redirect and move forward and do something better and different with their life instead of the vicious cycle of addiction, so.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, you know, there's no question about what you're doing. The question that the council has is whether or not to basically, you know, to waive the five and go to the 12. So that's what we're forced with now. And, well, I shouldn't say forced with because that's not the proper choice of words. That's what we're dealing with now. And I lost my train of thought here too. But, you know, we have to look at, you know, all sides of the issue as to, you know, how it affects, you know, the neighborhood and, you know, residents and how it affects what happens to future councils too. Because this, you know, potentially could be coming up again. So that's where we're at right now, is to look at the request and council is so inclined to act on it.
May I add something to that? I just don't have a client of mine.
Yeah, it's not a hearing, so.
No, I was just going to say that, you know, I'm a stable member of this community because of the program. I have a house and pay my bills, so.
Bill, you have, you know, starting on page 102 of our agenda here, the conclusions and you have some blanks to fill in. If the council decides one way or another with, you know, a yes, no, or a yes with a different number or something, how do we fill those blanks in? And that would be... Or is, would we just move to either, you know, grant with a certain number and then we fill the blanks in later? Is that adequate?
We could certainly do that. I mean, you know, you can instruct me on how you want the findings to be and I will make them so. And, you know, we could bring back findings. I mean, you know, I think as they are now, I mean, when I look at the blanks, you know, like number three is basically whether, you know, it's just asking a general question of whether an accommodation is necessary. Number four was my understanding that we were just being asked to totally waive the limit. And so that was kind of that would or would not be reasonable. Number five then would be, you know, would allow us to say that there's going to be no deviation or that fill in the number would be a reasonable deviation. And that could be 12 or anything between 5 and 12. And, you know, I mean, I think the rest of them could be filled in. But, you know, that was, I had done it that way just because I knew I wasn't going to be here in the last meeting and I wanted something that you could work with. But, you know, if you decide on something and we want to go through it and put it together so it's more of a narrative rather than a fill-in-the-blank kind of a document when it gets signed, that's fine. We can certainly do that.
Well, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to grant request for reasonable accommodation under the Federal Fair Housing Act.
I'll second that.
Are you granting that as the request for 12?
We want the number set at 12.
And that's your request because that is in the, what was handed out earlier tonight?
Correct.
Yep. That is...
I don't know if the number 12 should be part of the motion. I'm just thinking maybe it should be.
Well, is there...
Technically, the letter suffices as the request. I'm asking for a specific number of 12 residents.
Boys, I'll move an amendment to the motion to specify 12 and then also to limit it to Recovery Center LLC is operated by Mae Mallory Rogers.
At this address, correct?
At this address, yes.
I guess the question with the 12 is, is that 12 non-related? Like what about children in the residence? How are they factored into that 12?
Say again?
If any of the ladies living in that home have children that are staying there with them, are those children included in the 12?
Mae, how would you handle that?
Well, that's a beautiful question, Alicia, because we do have a lady that's going to be delivering. And I view a child as a person. So if you guys are granted 12, I would have to find room, find house for someone else because I'm not going to throw the lady with the baby out. But the federal law doesn't require children to be counted as an occupancy in one of the numbers. But I don't care how you guys want to do it. If you want me to just do 12 bodies, whether it's child or adults, I'm fine with that. I don't intend to have children there. I don't have them living there except for if there are newborn babies being delivered. But we have delivered five babies this summer and have lived with us, so. We're saving them from foster care. We have one due in a month, so. So it would be at this point 12 ladies with a newborn baby. But if it's 12 people, period.
All of non-related individuals.
Non-related, okay.
That would follow the wording in the order that's in specifying non-related, correct?
I think it would. You know, you could probably, Mae could maybe would have, would know. I mean, I don't know, you know, if a resident has a child, I don't know how long, you know, they would stay there. I mean, I suppose it might vary. It doesn't sound like this has happened a lot in the past, but maybe you think it's going...
This summer, it's been booming because Journey Homes that used to be operated by St. Cloud, Centricare, Recovery Plus has closed. And that's the only other program that allowed people with their babies. So it's not a lot, but like I said, we deliver five babies now. This one will be our only baby still currently with us. The rest have moved on to independent housing or a home with families because families have finally allowed them to return home. You know, sobriety is there and stability is there.
I would... I would amend my motion, or my motion to amend the motion. To specify up to 12 unrelated individuals at this address, so long as Recovery Center LLC is there, operated by Ms. Mauer Rogers. I believe that encompasses, so that would allow the children to remain. We had a motion to approve, and then my motion to amend.
Let's do this, just in one fell swoop, then, as one motion, then, technically, I have not reread the motion, so you can change it as long as your second or, oh, you made the motion, right?
I made the motion.
You made the motion.
Before it's amended.
Okay.
So you want me to reread the amended motion?
Yes.
All right, you're going to have to.
Jennifer, do you have it?
Well, in three different parts, I do.
Okay.
Grant other request of 12 residents of the Fair Housing Act, and then Sean amended it, so limited to Recovery Center LLC, under Mae Mauer Rogers' direction, and then it was amendment to the amended motion, to have up to 12 unrelated individuals for Recovery Center LLC, under the operation of Mae Mauer Rogers.
At that address, or?
At 416 Wendell Street.
416 Wendell. Are we clear on that? Questions, Bill?
Well, I mean, I would suggest that we still make these other findings that I had up there, I mean, the motion implies that we're going to find that the accommodation is appropriate, and that modification, you know, but, I mean, I think I would suggest that we still do these, kind of generally add some of the findings and conclusions in sort of the similar detail, but I get the gist of it, I mean, we want it to be specific, we're going to find that the accommodation's appropriate, we're going to grant an accommodation of 12, up to 12 unrelated individuals at Recovery Center LLC, as long as it's operated by Mae Mauer Rogers, at this address.
And those will be put in the conclusions here, the findings effect.
Yep.
Okay.
Would it make sense, just to clarify the record, for me to withdraw my second, Len to withdraw his motion, and then we make a motion on the findings first, before doing the overarching resolution?
Would that clear things up, Bill? Okay. Okay. All right, we're withdrawing, start over.
So then, I would make the motion that we complete the findings as in the conclusions, starting on page 102 of our agenda packet, with bullet point number three, checking the box, is. Bullet point number four, checking the box, would. Bullet point number five, checking the second box, which is that residents would be.
You need a number in there?
12. Yes, 12 residents would be a reasonable accommodation. Checking box number six, that there has been. Checking box number nine, the council has found that the accommodation requested of 12 individuals is reasonable. And checking box number 10, the council finds that the accommodation of 12 individuals would not create a fundamental alteration.
On number five, do you want that to say 12 non-related?
Yes.
Yes.
And number four, instead of saying a total waiver, would be 12, if I did not clarify that in the motion.
Got that, Bill?
And, I mean, my intent would be to just do it as a narrative.
Yes.
As if those boxes, you know, I mean, we're just going to make it a narrative, I'm not going to, I'm going to take the boxes off, and we'll say exactly what you've indicated.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. We have the motion and the discussion, and that will be. We have to read it again, so we're clear? Is everybody clear?
I think I'm clear, I mean, I was, when Councilmember Ranky first made the motion, I don't know that he said non-related, but now at the end, I think he did say.
He did say, yes.
Non-related, so that's my understanding now.
Can I just ask clarification on number 10, put number 10 there? So we're saying that this accommodation is reasonable, but any further modification of the ordinance would create fundamental alteration, so like, we're not going any further than 12? Is that, am I understanding that correct?
Well, I could probably word it better than that, but I think it needs to say that this modification of the zoning ordinance would not create a fundamental alteration.
Okay.
Rest, the ordinance stands as is.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Or what it's worth, I was, when I was in the service in Berlin, which at that point in time was a divided city, run by, they're governed by the US, the French, the British, and then the Soviets, and each of the entities had free rein to travel throughout the city to be sure that, you know, the Americans or the Brits weren't amassing forces, or whatever, to take over the rest of the city, and the Soviets would always have four soldiers in a vehicle, and they would visit the other sectors, and they would never have the four people be the same for accountability, and to be sure that they weren't going to defect, or plan to defect, or whatever, so it's kind of similar here, keeping an eye on each other to be sure that the rules are followed, and I guess for that support, so. Kind of related, but entirely different. Anything else? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That carried? Been a long process, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's past time to address the other issue here, but thank you for your patience, and now we have a lot of paperwork.
Mr. Mayor, before we add a motion on the entire process, or were we just leaving it with?
Oh, if you so choose.
Then I would move to grant the request up to 12 unrelated individuals, so long as it's operated at this address, operated by Recovery Center LLC, and operated by Mae Mauer Rogers. Which I believe encompasses all of our amendments from earlier.
And I would just suggest that you authorize the mayor to sign a resolution accomplishing that.
And I would authorize the mayor to sign a resolution accomplishing that.
Second. Yeah, I wasn't writing that down, you.
Yep, to grant the, to grant the request for up to 12 unrelated persons at 416 Wendell Street, operated by Recovery Center LLC, under the permission of Mae Mauer Rogers, and authorize the mayor to sign the accommodation.
Resolution?
It's not a resolution.
No. I have a blank.
Yeah.
Okay, we did not cover that in the first one? Okay, well, we'll be sure to cover it. I have two attorneys here to guide me, so. Any questions on that discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That carried? All right, you're next. We are to item G, the wage study to be addressed at 6:45, plus or minus. Right. And from one complex issue to another, these are coming out.
My pleasure.
Guide us through this. So we're here, at page 105, and we have Ann Entonson here, so where are we starting here? Because we have like 20 something pages of stuff.
Well, my understanding was, is that you wanted me to come up and answer any questions that you had, so I really wasn't sure what the format was, whether you wanted me to walk through what you've been provided, or answer any questions that you have, so I'm at your direction of how you would like to proceed.
Okay. So we do have coffee there, courtesy of Councilor Ranky, too, so let your whistle. We had asked this to be done in regards to our ongoing operations here, and quite often we find ourselves out of, not out of compliance necessary, but out of being competitive in the real world and keeping employees, and as part of negotiations with our unions, we had said that we were going to have this study done, and then come back with, I think the way it said in our motions there, that there would be a recommendation that came with this, but that's kind of unrealistic, because it's up to the council to actually act on that, so. But we have, you know, a handful of different scenarios that we are looking at, and we're looking for some guidance because of the complexity. We've got, you know, a number of cities that have been contacted, one of my questions is that, you know, with a lot of these cities, it's how do you link up the, you know, match the jobs, because they're so different from city to city, so that, you know, the scale, we can take a look at that scale and say, yes, the, you know, whatever position it is, whether or not it's, you know, place is pretty standard, but, you know, especially with the city administrator slash economic development director, how many cities have those, you know, and trying to keep things in line.
Right.
Plus the different ways that, you know, to get us back into being competitive, so to speak, as to how we can look at these three different methods to bring us there.
Right, okay. So in the market survey data, and, you know, especially with smaller cities, yeah, it becomes a little bit more difficult to do exact matches for positions, because typically in a smaller city, employees wear a lot of hats, and they don't always wear the same hats across different types of cities. And so what we do is, we go through and kind of match positions. We have copies of your job descriptions, so we can see specifically the work that your positions are doing, and then we try and match those with the positions in other cities, realizing that some of them are not going to be an exact match, but we realize that your position might have more or less responsibility than the target market survey organizations, and we take that into consideration, then, as we review the information, as we analyze that information. But the second piece of that is, on top of the market survey data, then we have the internal equity piece. So we say, okay, overall, this is where positions line up with the survey, realizing there's going to be slight differences in the survey data, but then where do positions line up internally, based on your specific requirements for a position, and that position's responsibilities within the organization? So for example, your city administrator, that's also an economic development director, you have, you know, a public works director that's also in charge of the airport, you have, you know, a position that's an administrative assistant, but it also works on zoning. And so you do have some uniqueness to some of your positions, and that's why you see kind of varying responses in that market survey data for that, so that we can specifically say, okay, does it match? Or we know that the position within the city of Painesville will have higher responsibility, and I'll take your administrative assistant zoning specialist, for example. That's not going to be, what we have for matching information is administrative assistant-level positions, but we pick kind of a higher level of that administrative assistant, realizing that yours has more responsibility, but then we recognize, as we place it in the compensation plan, based on internal equity, that that position may show up, that it might be slightly above the market because of the position responsibilities. So we go, you know, we collect the market survey data, and as you can see, we had a total of 25 responses, but we don't have 25 responses for every position, because every organization is unique in its structure, and the level and type of positions that you have. So we have some positions where we didn't have any responses, so you have a social media specialist, we didn't find any matches for that. So then how do we place that in the compensation plan? It's based on where it lines up with similar positions within the city. So, you know, we go through and we collect the market survey data, we do a detailed analysis of data point by data point, and then we also, you know, recognize, as we're going through the information, this position, and this position, and this position are not an exact match to the market survey.
So does that also apply to, like, our maintenance workers who have water and wastewater operator licenses?
Yes.
You clustered that in as you were analyzing that?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yep. And that's why we get copies of your job descriptions, so we can go not just based on title, but based on what position responsibilities are. You know, and some positions are easier to match than others. You know, chief of police, a police officer, a liquor store clerk, a liquor store manager, they're a little bit easier to line up, you know, there might be slight variations, but they're going to be more typical across organizations.
Does any of this taken affect any benefits?
This is not looking, this is just looking at the wage information. We had a little bit of difficulty getting benefits, and that wasn't something that was a big request from your former city administrator at the time, to gather a lot of benefit information, it was mostly looking at wage information. In most public sector organizations, if you start to look kind of at the benefits, they're going to be fairly similar, you know, one might have slightly more leave than another one, some might pay a little bit higher contribution towards health insurance, but if you look at the total package, they're going to be fairly consistent with one another.
And then you said you looked at all the job descriptions, so as far as you're concerned, and it came up a couple different times, we'll come back to the public works, where our guys aren't maintenance workers, they're wastewater controllers, and that's figured into this, correct?
Yes, and then you do also have different levels of maintenance worker as well, so that was taken into consideration as well. And then we had, you know, some positions that had undergone changes since the last time we did the analysis, so we looked at updated job descriptions, and we had new position analysis questionnaires completed for those positions, to review their job evaluation points, which is how we review internal equity. So we did an update of those positions as well, there were a couple of new positions that were created as a part of this as well, so we had some updates, we had some changes, we had some new positions developed as a part of the study.
Mr. Mayor? Hmm? I might, I guess one of the flaws that I see with this, you may have looked at the job descriptions, however, we did not, I guess we were not given that opportunity to review our job descriptions and get them updated for the guys. And then also, if you look at this, in the maintenance worker, there was six respondents, the medium, there was eight, and the maintenance worker senior, there was 15. Every community has got water wastewater operators, and so there should have been at least 20 respondents coming back for each position. So I feel our guys were really surveyed under the maintenance position. When you think of a maintenance worker, what do you, when it goes out to the communities, that other administrator sees that, he don't look at our job descriptions, they're going to look at maintenance worker, they're going to line it up with what they're.
They're going to look at maintenance worker, they're going to line it up with what they're seeing, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong? But that's what this person is going to survey us at.
Well, but we analyzed the comparison and said, what is the level? And that's why we had to match which responses met which level of your worker. So, some of them equaled your senior, some of them equaled your intermediate, and some of them matched your other one. So, and not every community has a water and wastewater operator in their organization. So, that's why you're seeing various differences because not every one of the responses matched each of the positions. So, your position might have had less or more responsibility. So, we match it to the responsibility level of the position within the city of Painesville.
And what information do you receive back in the survey that lets you do the match?
Well, we send along, we do kind of a summary of your position and then we get that comparison as to this is a position that matches. We look at kind of the definition of the position and then determine whether it's a match for the position based on your job descriptions that you have in existence.
So, for a maintenance worker senior, how could you only come up, you know, that should be the number one water wastewater operator, how could you only come up with 15 responses?
Because not everybody has a water wastewater operator.
Why, virtually every community has a water.
Not necessarily. And some of them don't always match the position because not everybody has three levels of maintenance worker. So, some of them, you know, might just have the high level, some of them may have a lower level position, and then they might have, you know, a supervisor that has the higher level of responsibility. So, every department and every division in every city is structured differently.
Sure. Yes. So, basically, there's a lot of gray area.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, 15 responses is a, is a very good response rate for an organization. You know, we had 25 responses to the information, which is more communities than we usually actually even start with for doing these studies. Usually, we start with between 10 and 15 total communities to start to gather information with because that's the number that an organization says is consistent with them. They're competing for employees, it's similar in size, it's similar in geographic location. And so, you know, sometimes we'll have, you know, maybe five, six, or seven responses. So, having 15 responses for a position is actually an excellent number of responses. So, you know, the data that we have for the positions that we used is, is, is very good.
So, based on that explanation, just to make sure I'm understanding, so you're saying maybe you got responses back, like the public works director, you've got 23 responses here. So, some of those cities maybe would have had, the public works director was the one who was the senior maintenance worker and then might have had like a intermediate underneath him or something like that.
Correct.
And that's where you guys analyze the job descriptions and the supervisory roles and all of that stuff.
Yes, yeah. Because it's a little unusual for a city of this size to have that many levels of maintenance worker. You know, a lot of them will just have a single classification or maybe two. And so, we tried to match up what levels that were reported match the levels that you have within the city of Painesville.
Can I ask how much difference you feel would it, if the titles would be changed to water wastewater operators, how would most of those clerks or people surveying it? What, what would the difference be?
Probably not much because that's why we say these are the duties of the position. These, these are the duties, these are the requirements of the position. So, title doesn't necessarily fall into play. It's a guideline for somebody to say, oh, where does this position work? But then they look at, okay, what are the position's responsibilities?
Did, did I hear you correct that you, you don't have the job descriptions for the individuals in your?
We did not have the opportunity to change them, to update them. You know, they haven't been looked at in 15, kind of 15 years for the most part. And no, we did not. I guess if you're looking for a recommendation from me, obviously, I would like to see C8 adopted and then given the opportunity to, within the next year or so. I don't know if we something, you know, we don't want to spend any more money on this. I don't know if it's something we could do in-house.
C8. Option four. On the very, C9 would be your option.
I think the one thing we got to remember on there, the increase in the wages is not all out of a general fund. Most of the guys, I think it's about 60 to 70% of our wages do come out of water and sewer, as does a portion of the administrator and most other office personnel have a small percentage also.
So, Ron, if I understand your proposal is that the city sort of take this up in-house to do a more in-depth research into the public works descriptions?
Yes, if that, if we can do it in-house. I would like to see it as a.
I think that makes sense. I've had a conversation with somebody in public works and I haven't had the chance to look over everything that that person sent to me, but based on what I've seen and what we discussed, I think that would make sense. It seems like some things maybe weren't sent over or, not necessarily weren't sent over, but there's reason to believe we should take another look at it and just make sure this is maybe done right.
Yeah, when I, when I received the information from, from Renee, you know, I asked for any job descriptions that are in need of being updated, any positions that have changed and for those that have undergone significant changes to, or that were new to complete a position analysis questionnaire. And no changes were sent forth from the public works department.
Were there changes from other departments?
The positions that I had that we got some changes for were several positions in administration, the emergency management director, a slight revision in police officer, a new position in police of school resource officer, a new position in police department of police secretary slash bookkeeper. And then no changes for liquor store and no changes for public works is the information that was sent to me.
And on your behalf, you can only work with the information you were given?
Correct. They are only as good as the information we receive.
I guess if we were given that opportunity, you know, if I were, if I would have been asked, just we would have went through it and looked.
And Ron, I think a lot of the job descriptions are in that same boat, not just public works.
Oh, absolutely. That is correct. Yes.
Have not been looked at for a very long time.
So, before the next wage study, we definitely want to update that first and we're kind of in a roundabout way, wages money by not having everything. We kind of hit a flawed return here or survey or.
Biased, yeah.
But you're recommending option four, Ron, on page C9?
I guess if you're looking for a recommendation, that would be the one.
And would this be concurrent to 2019 or just the effect of January 2020? And I got a question on that too, if you're going the same way. Now, this increase does not include.
I don't know which one.
Increase that everybody just received, correct?
The two and a half percent.
Huh?
The two and a half percent.
Yeah, the two and a half percent.
This is based on.
I was out of the office, client meetings all last week.
So, the increase would be an additional?
Correct.
To the difference?
The increase would be, sorry, didn't hear.
Well, at the beginning of 2020, they all got a two and a half percent.
Right.
Pay increase and that's not factored in here.
That's not factored into here, no. It's factored into updating the pay scale for, for 2020, but it's not factored into individual employee wages.
But this was based on 1919 figure?
The, the salary survey data was 2019 and then we created, when I created the pay scale, it was based on the 2019 market data, but then I updated it to incorporate the two and a half percent increase that I knew that the city was moving forward with for 2020. So, we did a market adjustment and then a cost of living adjustment for 2020.
So, is that what this, we have it listed as C1? Is that what that first one you gave us?
Yes.
No? C1, is that the same?
I think it is the same.
A1 and C1.
A1.
(laughing). Yeah, it's the same.
Okay. So, you were looking at the C8 option four, is that correct? Okay. And that, what that option is, is, you know, we had several options as, which we typically do when we're looking at, okay, if we're making recommendations for changes or for the compensation plan, then how do we implement those changes? And, and, you know, typically, we look at, you know, move to minimum, we look at moving to closest step for the, an employee without any employee seeing a decrease. We look at years of service, so moving them to a step based on how long they've been in their position. And the option four that he is talking about is moving employees to the same step that they're currently on in your current scale. And the scales are the same, it's just the scale has been updated to account for, you know, being more competitive out in the marketplace and then also for the cost of living adjustment for 2020.
So, that 7.07% increase is included, that two and a half percent increase?
That doesn't include individuals, employees. So, that actually, that cost would probably, on this would probably actually go down if we did a two and a half percent increase first and then a move to current step. But it's probably fairly close to that because these employees are getting, on average, on average employees, you know, the average increase is 7%. I think the lowest percentage under this that any employee is getting is just over 5%. Yeah, the smallest increase is 5.88% up to a high for somebody of almost 13%.
Can you explain more about what you mean by moving steps as in the first couple of options here? Because it just seems to me like the only thing that might make sense is leaving people at where they are. That seems to be the most fair. So, why might something else make sense?
Well, and sometimes organizations want to look at it based on cost estimates. So, some organizations, although they might want to have employees stay on the same step that they're currently on, sometimes the cost is too high for an organization. It falls outside of their financial resources, so they want to look at other options for updating their pay plan that falls more in line with the funds that they have available for making changes to employee salaries, which is why we put together additional options for an organization to review. So, you can look at what are the differences in the cost impacts of making changes and updates to the system. Because we have some clients that move forward with a study such as this and, and they want to make changes, but they don't have the resources to make the changes all at once. So, they will have a starting point and then move forward.
Um, I would agree with you, Sean. It looks to me like option four is the right thing to do and the fair thing to do.
I agree. And I think, you know, what this does is it shows us that maybe we have been a little below market rate for some time and we've had people who have been working for less than what they deserve. So, I would make the motion to move forward with C8 and C9 or option four, however we want to propose that, effective January 1st, 2019.
And taking that out of reserve?
If that's where it has to come from.
And some would come out of the reserves for water and sewer also, not just.
So, that would be any, well, 2019 would be, would have to come out of reserve because that's already.
Yeah.
But then any excess for 2020 would come out of reserve too, that correct?
If we, yeah, if it's not.
I'll second that motion. And then part timers, are they considered on the C8? I believe.
I don't think so.
I don't think they are, no.
No, that's just the full-time employees.
So, where's our part timer with something on them?
The only one that dealt with part time is the very first study, so that would be on A9 starting.
We need to vote on the motion and then take up part timers.
Well, we want to be sure what we're, okay, we're here first.
Yeah, I think the part timers could also be moved to the current staff.
So, we want A8?
No.
A9. Where are we at? A9?
A9 is the start. A9 is the part time scale and then behind that.
What are the options up so I like?
I don't, is there an option four?
She did not give an option four for the part timer.
So, we would just need to make our own.
So, that would be, oh, part time here, option one, 12.
We would need to make our own option four.
13.
For part time.
Correct. We would just have to take.
Leaving them at the same.
Step they're at and going.
Yeah.
Adjusting them to the new scale.
There's a service, okay, just there's a service. There is no option four. So, that's a unknown then. What was?
So, then I would you, I would amend my motion to say that we'd include the same increase scheme so it applies to part-time employees as well.
Keeping them at the same step and grade, just adjusting their pay based on the scale.
Okay.
So, it'd basically be same percentages for part-time, 7, 8, 5, or 6.4?
Uh, no, it will be a little, probably a little bit different and, you know, we can, I can do that calculation.
That would be fabulous.
Uh, I can't do it right now, but I could do it for you tomorrow and get it sent up.
Could we approve full time tonight and do part time next meeting?
I'm fine with that in my motion, if we can do it. Okay.
Do it now.
Jennifer, do you want me to stop amending?
Are you withdrawing your amendment?
I'll withdraw my entire motion and just start over.
We're looking at the option A13, A12, and there's not a whole lot of difference, correct?
I don't think there's a lot of difference between the ones presented, but there might be.
Yeah, and there probably won't be a lot of difference between the option three and the option four with the part-time employees.
I don't think there's a lot of difference between the ones presented, but there might be.
Yeah, and there probably won't be a lot of difference between the option three and the option four with the part-time employees.
So then I would make the motion to move forward with option four for all full-time employees, and ask that option four be calculated for all part-time employees to be considered at the next council meeting, retroactive to January 1st, 2019, with funds to come from reserves, if not already budgeted.
I will second that.
Making a mess on my page here, did you get that, Jennifer?
Yes, I'm hoping to make the, um, take the motion to approve option number four to the full-time employees and option number four, for the part-time employees to be brought forward, but those calculations should be brought forward at the next meeting, effective January 1st, 2018, with the funds to come from reserves, if not already budgeted forward.
That has some.
That's my motion, yep.
Great, okay. Are we clear? Any other discussion or questions?
I would just make sure all the head, department heads figure this in for the next budget.
I would concur with that, and I don't like that this has to come out of reserves, but to me, this is about making it right. As I understand it, this should have been completed back in 2018, instead of just in the last couple of weeks, and had it been completed on time, we could have budgeted for it. So in order to make things right, we've got to pull it from the reserves, and we can do it right going forward.
Hey, anything else? Proceed to vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Propose, none, that carried? And the.
Now you guys are talking to each other.
I was thinking I was going to have all this free time tomorrow.
No, yeah, in real, um, in looking at the number of cities that you do with, you know, and looking at our city with the number of grades and steps that we have, are we in line with other cities as far as the complexity of how this is all done?
As far as the number of steps and the structure of your pay plan, yes, and that's how we structured it when we originally did the study, is we wanted to have something that was more consistent with what other organizations of comparable size and and location that we're doing, so, yes.
Yeah, it always seems we eventually get out of line somewhere, you know, and I don't know if that's something that's inherent in our structure or if it just happens.
Well, and it just happens, you know, the last several years, the market has been changing quite a bit. You know, it's been, it's been changing a lot because of, you know, unemployment is one of the big issues, and what that has caused is it's caused a lot of recruitment and retention issues, especially for public sector employers, because you just don't have as many people that are going into public service like we used to. And so it's created a much more competitive work environment.
I have one question, this has to get union approval before it's enacted?
Ask that memorandum of understanding through the union, and they would have to meet and vote.
I don't see where there's going to be a problem. Could be surprised.
Yeah, you never know.
You never know.
So then, do we need a motion authorizing the mayor to sign memorandum of understanding?
Oh, there was something, yeah.
Bill, would we need a motion to authorize the memorandum of understanding if the union has not met yet, or does that come back later?
Honestly, I don't know the process that's normally followed on that. I don't think it would hurt to do it and send it to them. I can't imagine why, you know, it would lay it all out for what the proposal is so they could consider it, I think that would make sense to do it that way.
And, but that would be, well, we.
Because you had an agreement with the union to do the market survey and to do a contract reopener for any results. Yeah, so I would put together a memorandum of understanding.
Because we'll have to act on the part-time one when we get that correct.
Correct.
So that would be combined into one, because we have some part-time in the union.
In the bargaining unit, yeah, and I'll get that done and sent up to you probably tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right, we get to go way back up to page 27. Oh, wait, yeah, you poked me, and then I, my mind wandered here. And that is to whether or not, what do you want? To, where's that here? Change your job titles and descriptions from finance specialist to treasurer and administrative assistant slash zoning specialist to administrative assistant slash zoning administrator. The council wishes to do that, which was, I think, recommended as we went through this process here too, we have a motion to do that.
I'll make the motion to change the job titles and descriptions from finance specialist to treasurer and administrative assistant, zoning specialist to administrative assistant, zoning administrator, and remove those duties from the city administrator job description.
And do you want our years of service to start at one, or where we're at now?
Probably where you're at now. Right, you've been doing those jobs for, yeah, okay.
Was there a second date in here, wasn't there? I'll second that. Motion by Lowell, seconded by Rinkie, to change the job titles and descriptions from finance specialist to treasurer and administrative assistant slash zoning specialist to administrative assistant slash zoning administrator, and to extract those duties from the job description of the city administrator slash economic development director, and to leave those positions in the existing steps that they're at, correct?
Yes.
Great, you're correct. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
I just thought that we had information on that somewhere in here, although it's going to affect everything.
Is that option B?
I still think we should wait for the new city administrator before he starts changing people's job descriptions.
The big, the problem I see with that is that, right now, currently, those positions are in the job description of the new administrators, so if we're going to change them, we don't need to hire somebody to fill those roles if we're just going to hand those responsibilities back to the people that are already doing those jobs.
But then when somebody new comes in, you don't know if that position would be the right one, or not the right one, or would you appoint, or he appoint those job positions?
Jennifer and Belinda are already doing those jobs, is the thing? Jennifer and Belinda are already doing those jobs, but those job descriptions are currently put into the administrator description, and so it's just a matter of giving them the rightful titles of what the work they're already doing, and relieving the new administrator of those responsibilities, or any indication that they would have to fill those roles.
And that was figured in C, wasn't it, the new positions?
That was in A, one of them. A had the treasurer and zoning administrator only, and I asked her to do B, to put us back at our current positions, because you guys have a choice to make, it wasn't automatic. And then C also included the finance specialist and zoning assistant.
C did.
Yes, A is the only one that includes treasurer and zoning administrator.
Right, so initially, when Renee sent the information, she sent those job descriptions, looking like they hadn't been approved by the council.
And that was the only choice she had, which nobody knew until we got it from her.
Right, but it was based on the minutes in here, it was discussed at a couple of working sessions.
If we're going to change those jobs, why don't we change some of the guys, the wastewater operators? Would it be those people?
It probably will be.
Yeah, we probably will, they just haven't been reviewed yet.
Belinda, under the current, as finance administrator, because I think that's how it's.
Finance specialist.
Specialist, what grade does that place you at?
Right now?
Yeah, I thought it was nine, but then I'm looking at some things that show seven, so that's why I just want to know for sure what we're talking about.
Grade, seven, step nine.
Seven, step nine, okay. And then if we bumped it to treasurer, that would go to what grade?
That one says grade 10.
A3, it says 10.
And that's what I understand as well, that's why I was.
Yes.
Looking at some things. So I'm looking at page C1. Me. The job thing. How would it normally work if this were just like a promotion without the job description? Like if somebody were promoted from one position and so onto another without the change in job description, how would that typically work?
That wouldn't work, because it's defined, the job description places them on the grade chart.
So, okay, so if Kristen, a social media specialist, applies for treasurer and gets the position, that would be a promotion for her.
Oh, if they change, if they change jobs?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So if somebody changes jobs, how would that?
Well, I did that, I promoted vehicle clerk to finance specialist, whatever the title was at that time.
And then did you stay at the same, same step then, or how did that work?
I honestly don't remember.
Could stay at the same step, the grade changes.
The grade changes, but you don't have, I mean, so the steps are meant to reward and sort of acknowledge that you gain experience on the job.
For a year.
Yeah, but if you're going into a new position, you don't have that same experience. So, I mean, a step nine in one position doesn't mean that you have the step nine knowledge in another position. So that's why I'm just curious how it would work if there was a job change or a promotion otherwise.
But you've got a tenure already. Well, one thing's.
Well, Jason, you're the most recent one that would have changed in October, I believe. You went from a.
When I went from maintenance worker and got my class D water wastewater, it was the closest step without going backwards at a five percent increase. So actually, I went up from a grade four, I believe it was, to a grade six, but I went back a step or two to get to close to a five percent increase stages. And now this time, I went from intermediate to senior by getting my class C water and wastewater, I went straight down and because I only went up one grade, I couldn't go back a step and still get that five percent. I think the union contract reads that promotions are five percent.
I do.
It went from 6.3 to 7.3, didn't it?
So I clicked one on Brad, and it says promotional step placement. Employees who are promoted to a new classification will move to the closest step in the new salary range that meets or exceeds five percent above the employee's existing salary.
There you go, yeah. That's what mine was.
It's true.
So then.
But no.
If you're going to a grade 10, it looks like approximately would be a step six on the C1 scale.
I calculate it as step five. It's 50,570.9 plus five percent is 53099. Which was, so that's step five. How long have you been doing the treasurer stuff?
Well, the, what I went by, Sean, is she had given Ann my finance specialist job description, and had marked out, because I asked Ann for a copy of mine and Jennifer's both. And on both cases, on my case in particular, on the back page was a few building permit things that she took off because I haven't been doing them since we have Brad and Jen in the building official position, and on the front, she added two things, and one was responsible for all aspects of the audit financially, which I have been doing, and responsible to follow the statutes as they read for finances, which I have been doing.
So you've been doing that since you took over as financial specialist?
Correct, with, you know, every year she's giving me a little bit more just because I've got more comfortable position.
What else would an official treasurer do?
Is that, a lot of cities have that treasurer position combined with a city clerk, don't they?
Clerk, treasurer.
Clerk, treasurer, yeah.
I have one concern, I guess, like when Lee Schlepper got on Public Works, went to intermediate, and before that, he'd been at the. So his years of service right now are two, and he's really got about 26. But he had to start over when he got the new title, right? So, if that's the way it works, should be the same for.
I agree, it should be the same, but I also think we.
He's a grade A on C8.
I want C7, you remind me.
That's the, that's the guy who gives the correct step one, C8. C8. If you go across to him, he is at grade six, step eight.
Right, but still.
But years of service says two, right?
That's why they did go by that on that one, if you go back to.
Okay.
Yes, the years of service, that does go by that. C7.
So he is, okay.
That's only years he's been in that.
In that position, it doesn't really mean, okay, let me find him. I was on C7.
Yes. Of course, there was quite a few issues at C7.
Step eight, grade six, yeah, okay.
When did you start doing the finance stuff?
2008, January 21.
So if you had been moved to treasurer even five years ago, you'd max out the steps already.
Are we ready on this? Changing the titles and the descriptions?
Does this change your grade at all?
I'm sorry?
Does this change your grade at all?
Um, mine has first, and that's a four, so.
Okay, Belinda, does this change Jennifer?
We're checking, yeah.
Okay, it does, it moves to gender, three, six.
To a what?
A3.
Three, seven, six.
Then am I safe in assuming that it's kind of the same thing as Belinda, where you've been doing this for well over five years? Then am I safe in assuming that it's kind of the same thing as Belinda, where you've been doing this for well over five years and?
Discussion started on us back in two thousand fifteen, is that what we found done for the morning session?
I think the minutes go from fourteen and fifteen.
Yeah, I think it was fifteen.
I think part of it might have come out of the strategic planning session that had a ways back when you were, they were looking at number one firm back then was stacking.
Hmm.
I think that's maybe where some of that was stimulated from.
I think you need to start swatching, switching job descriptions and going on pay grades and everything else for a couple people you better look at for everybody. If they're not listed right then. Just go across the board.
But this was discussed back at that work session, and it's been ongoing.
This, this is just as much about paying them for the work that they're already doing. But, yeah, I agree with you, I think that probably all the department heads should look at their job descriptions and the work that their employees are doing and making sure that that stuff all lines up.
So maybe we can make the vote knowing that we're doing it on these two, but no, knowing that no one is precluded from potentially making the same request. I mean, if errors are spotted.
Right, if there are other people who are doing work that they're not necessarily being compensated for, but it should be brought to our attention.
I think we're ready for the questions. Yep, all right, then, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I pose a motion carries forward.
Can we take a bathroom break?
Yep.
And we're going to which step? Based on the contract? Right, can we need to figure out? Are you putting Jenna and I both at the step we're currently at?
Um, it was.
That was mine.
That's with the, with the matchup with the descriptions on. Whatever chart that was, correct? And was the motion retroactive or is it starting? Yeah, well, that's. I mean, we can only go back two years legally. But I think everything else went to nineteen, I imagine this should too.
That wasn't a part of my motion, are you making that motion, Neil?
Well.
That's retroactive?
I'm just, I'm just discussing.
If you're gonna make an emotion like that, and if something else comes up this next year and it goes back, then you're gonna have to start back paying everybody next three, four, five, six years. You're gonna set a precedent.
No, two years is what the legality is. As far as I understand. No, it's up to the council what they wanna do. I mean, that's what we're doing with the police on their holiday thing, that was two years.
Yeah, but that's.
That was a contracted.
Yeah, that was a contracted issue where it was laid out in the contract what that was going to be. These things are really just coming to the council for the first time tonight. I mean, it's been discussed at working session.
So. It starts January first, is that?
Twenty twenty.
Okay.
Which step?
I'm, I'm fine with that too, right?
Does it start January first, twenty twenty? I understood the motion essentially be January fourteenth, twenty twenty.
January fourteenth, okay.
I mean, that would just be the next business day following our meeting, that's why.
Okay.
I mean, unless we wanna make it retroactive. I, I would not be in favor of going back to nineteen. I understand the argument, but I, I agree with Alicia that this really is just being brought forward for action at this time, it hasn't been contracted before. I again sympathize with the argument, but at some point we have to stop the financial bleeding too.
That, that would make sense because anytime you start looking at job descriptions, you're, you're looking back at what the person has been doing, and then if you're gonna, you know, go back because that's what you're doing and you're changing the job, job description, that's gonna open up a big, big can of worms. I, a question's been answered.
Okay.
Great step or step that was, was slated with five percent increase?
I understood it was current step. That was my understanding of the motion. But I didn't make it, so.
Um, but that was what I intended.
At least you did.
Yeah, but.
Okay.
Be current step.
Now, can we move up to item H?
Can we take a bathroom break?
Yeah, oh yeah. Forgot about that.
I, I mean, it says.
Yeah.
Oh, fresh. Probably, I hope not. I don't know when it's supposed to quit. I think April Tuesday, next Tuesday. Hey, can I ask a question? Because I'm gonna get asked that question tomorrow. I think we can. I'm just. You know, that's why I'm curious. For two thousand like.
Tonight, didn't I?
Well, that's, and that's not.
Do you prefer King or Donald?
That will have to stop.
At the meeting.
Cause.
Are you taking Patty or anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
But what, uh, either or.
There is a scale there.
Not smoking room, right?
With that scale. So what's flirting?
Uh, that's a problem.
Oh, okay.
And it's all the way it comes to get her old until like eleven o'clock.
Yes, I think it's just Friday night. No, I think it's Friday night. Oh, yeah.
Anybody else?
Everybody is going back to. But I think that, um, Len said he does, he would promote her because he does want. Do you care?
Yes, of course. I don't know. I just got a. So it's indoors. I can just pull.
Is that, why do you? No, we were supposed to.
You gotta.
Yeah, I'm sure it did, Jen did.
No, it never.
Oh, that's why I know.
That's the wifi.
You need to figure out.
No, no.
I think we can, Ron's not here, but we can. Okay. At, I have made the twenty twenty council board appointments, there should be typically don't change in the middle or two year. Council?
Move to approve the twenty twenty council board appointments as presented.
Second, motion by Renkey, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the twenty twenty council board appointments as presented, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I pose none, and then carry. And the next one is the twenty twenty city board member appointments.
I have one question on that one.
Yep.
On the EDAF board. Gina Sweeney's no longer on it, is she still on the subfinance?
Gina's on finance, yes.
Um.
That's never been like that before. She's on finance committee, but. The EDAF had always had, um, one of the EDAF members from the council on the finance board.
Okay.
Correct? And, I'm looking back to twenty nineteen, I think that was you as the more experienced council member.
You know, I suppose that's, um, what was last time we did it, maybe?
I don't know, I just, if it's right, it's right, if it's not.
Let's take her off for now, but we can ask her back on.
Okay. So you would be on the finance, the subfinance board.
On the EDAF, either myself or Sean would be.
I think Sean pointed it in.
I said I thought it was Len.
Okay. Make that change.
And then, um, on the environmental board, my wife said she'd be interested in filling one of the vacancies.
Oh, good.
So. Fill one of those vacancies with Erica Renkey.
Does that have to go to the environmental board? I chakred email back telling her that I had to go to them to bring a motion to the council?
It doesn't have to, no, no.
Perfect.
And the vacancy was filled tonight for, uh, um, planning.
Planning?
Yep. Planning board, right?
Yep. Although there remains that vacancy on the ad hocks of the all front counter reconfiguration board.
Gotta recruit.
That's okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the twenty twenty city board member appointments. Hertzberg, Hertzberg, seconded by Gilmore to build the, uh, approve the twenty twenty city board member appointments as been penciled in here, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose none, carry. And the twenty twenty city assignments and appointments on page thirty one, anything look out of place there?
Everything looks fine, but there's been some discussion in policies and procedures, and I think budget, about changing the labor attorney. That's something we wanted to review with this or take up at a future meeting. Policies and procedures, thought that was a decision the whole council should look at. I'm just kind of, I think, from listening to Sean, it'd be listed on the same exact thing where it said the labor attorney and the name? Yeah, yeah, we handle it sort of in the same fashion, but going forward. Or if we can include it in tonight, yeah, we can have that discussion on the labor attorney and. It's not on here, but.
No. Is there a recommendation from?
There was some questions, right? They were gonna call a couple of different.
Okay.
When we left policies and procedures, I believe we left it that we were going to contact like three different.
Okay.
Attorneys offices that were on that list and talk to a few cities to see who they had and then bring it to council directly.
Okay, so it's just premature at this point?
Yeah, the council cutoff had already happened by the time we met the policies and procedures, so.
So we leave this as is then?
And then? I think a motion to approve the twenty twenty city assignments appointments as presented, going forward, we're going to have the labor attorney listed also. I'll second that.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Renkey to approve the twenty twenty city assignments appointments as presented with the understanding that the recommendation for labor attorney will be coming and then be appointed at that, by council at that time?
I think with the intent that that labor attorney appointment be reviewed annually with the rest of these.
Annual. Any other?
Just a motion again, are you?
Nope.
Cause I think your motion.
I'll figure, aye?
Aye.
Pose none, carry, okay. And meeting day changes, only one this year, it looks, and that's Memorial Day to move that to Tuesday, May twenty sixth.
I just was wondering, do we typically, we're closed this day, and the city hall often ends up being closed for safety day. We're closed for safety day and we usually still meet that night.
It's a, it's not holiday, we're still working that day, so.
Okay. Okay, I'll make the motion to reschedule the city council meeting for Monday, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty to Tuesday, May twenty sixth, twenty twenty.
Second. Motion by the Lebov, seconded by Hertzberg to reschedule city council meeting for Monday, May twenty fifth to Tuesday, May twenty sixth, twenty twenty, discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose none, carry. And then the next one is looking for a working session, we've got some ideas down there already, brought their calendars. Well, Wednesdays are out for me.
Yeah, Wednesdays don't work.
Okay. So we can forget them. If I have a preference, it would be one of the Mondays.
A what?
One of the Mondays.
That'd be before a regular council meeting?
Actually, we have five Mondays in New York.
The sixteenth and the thirtieth.
Oh, and the sixteenth is the third Monday, so it's between.
Oh, so between.
Of March, yep.
Plan does not start meeting twice yet, so.
Okay.
Do we want to look at maybe an earlier working session though to discuss or start drawing up a, uh, job description for the city administrator? Include that in a working session?
We're having.
Are we even behind the, uh, time there?
So Liza is coming to our next council meeting, correct?
Potentially, potentially.
I think we should have a description ready for her by then. The twenty seventh.
Would she in her, um, that she's putting together, none of that would include stuff to put into the job description, correct?
It looks like almost you're gonna have to do it the, um, twenty third.
No.
Like before.
Thursday.
A week from Thursday. If you're gonna get a job description ready for. You keep rolling on the city admin. Jen's gonna say something.
No, but her intention is to come on the twenty seventh and present the entire proposal. Part of that proposal is she's looking for advice or guidance from the council on what that job description is gonna look like as well as the salary range. So the proposal that she brings, if she doesn't have those two pieces, we would probably back her up to the next meeting because there's gonna be a lot of light in that proposal. Cause this is the proposal that she's gonna bring is pretty much what she's going to hand prospective people during this search.
And I believe that it would stand to make sense that you would do that job description, get a temporary one, a tech, you know, a starting point on that, and then that would have to go to Ann Antson to be pointed to get a salary range.
Well, then I move to set a special city council working session for Thursday, January twenty third at six P M.
Is that, uh, if she, if she's coming out on the twenty seventh, that probably doesn't actually give us enough time?
Well, we will probably end up, you know, backing it up and, you know, um. Let's do that, Belinda.
Well, we could put her on the agenda and just have the attachment as an update.
As an update, yeah, and then maybe if we got.
But that would give her basically Friday and Monday to.
We. The wage study had a city administrator category, it was grade seventeen.
That might change that description, right? That, that was based on, with the description of the treasurer and the zoning administrator jobs in there.
Yep.
If we took those duties out of the job description and just struck strikes them and sent Ann a tentative job description between now and the twenty third, she could come up with maybe a scale for that. she could come up with maybe a scale for that. You could finalize things at your working session, if there's anything that needs to be tweaked, changed, added, subtracted. We would still potentially have two full days before you meet on the twenty-seventh to do that.
Yep.
That would keep you still on the twenty-seventh schedule.
Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable, we do it if we can, and.
So the motion is still over the twenty-third at six?
Yep.
I'll second that.
I'm not sure what my schedule is.
Well, you will be here now.
Well.
You're gonna be here.
If my name is circled, I'm all the time.
We have a motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to have the special city council working session on Thursday evening, January twenty-third, here in council chambers, at six P M, discussion. All favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, carried.
And if the mayor needs to sign a note for now.
Yep. Okay, now we have a request from the Painsel Sportsman's Club to conduct a raffle at Queen B's on March sixth, twenty-twenty, so a motion.
Thursday, twenty-third.
Minnesota lawful gambling, L G two-two-zero.
I move to approve the Minnesota lawful gambling, L G two-twenty, application for exempt permit for the Painsel Sportsman Club to conduct a raffle at Queen B's Bar and Grill on March sixth, twenty-twenty.
Second. Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg to approve that application, discussion, all in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, carried. And we're looking for motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-four, allowing wired and automated bank payments, as shown there.
I move to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-four, allowing wired automated bank payments, with the amendment to the resolution that finance specialists refer to treasurer.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to approve resolution twenty-twenty oh four, allowing wired and automatic bank payments, with the note that the wording has changed. In there, discussion. All favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And on to Bill's favorite things here, we have a request, Shane Schmidt wants to put a porch on the, on his house that will not meet the setbacks, the description is all listed there, and.
I'll make the motion to set the, Shane Schmidt, Marriott's public hearing, for Monday, February tenth, twenty-twenty, at six-thirty P M.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to set that hearing for February tenth, twenty-twenty, at six-thirty P M, discussion. All in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And are we looking at changing those setbacks in the zoning?
I would not.
You believe not, okay.
Yeah, we are on the, we are on the former lots, I believe in the front, we have decreased that setback. If you look at this plaque when you're driving along Lake Avenue, all the houses sit very close to Lake Avenue. So even in what we call the adjacent structure measurement, and even with what he wants to put on, he still needs areas.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on and out to beat a dead horse, but I think we need to go back to the wage study. When we were on the break, the chief talked to me, we need to clarify whether or not the two-and-a-half percent COLA increase is included, on how far it goes back. The motion was to adopt the pay schedules on C eight and C nine. And as I understood Ann tonight, she said that that did include the two-and-a-half percent COLA, which of course would not need to be included for two thousand nineteen. But I think there's some confusion about whether or not that pay scale actually does include it.
Based on what she said, it sounded like that pay scale did include the two-and-a-half percent COLA for twenty-twenty.
When we talked with her, that is not the impression I had.
I didn't either, Paul.
Because we specifically asked her for a base scale that addressed the two-and-a-half percent, assuming what she had sent us was two thousand, was two thousand and nineteen wages, or based on two thousand and nineteen wage. Because we wanted the council to have the information showing that while this is what she's saying two thousand and nineteen is, there's still a two-and-a-half percent increase that's gonna take place in two thousand and twenty. And when we, when we asked her about that, I did not get the impression that she included that two-and-a-half percent. First time after her actually say it, we probably talked with her a good hour and a half.
Can we clarify that with her tomorrow, when you ask her about the part-time employees, though?
If necessary, we could call a special meeting on the twenty-third to act on that if we have to, we don't have to act on anything tonight. We get that clarification. Right?
Okay.
On do we want this?
Do we need notice for a special meeting, like that? Okay.
We have time.
Do we want to stay implementation of the motion until we get that clarification?
I mean.
Pay, payday, or when's the next pay count due, I did?
She's doing it right now, so it'll be in two weeks, so.
It would be twelve, the payday would be the thirteen?
Okay.
She should be working on payable to potential the twenty-second, twenty-eighth.
So we would have it sorted out by then?
We have time.
Okay.
Sorry, I just forgotten that I didn't want.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's good. Okay, next one is I M P, certificate of deposits, savings and money market accounts, on page fifty, resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-two.
I move to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-two regarding certificate of deposits, savings accounts, and money market accounts, with the amendment to the resolution that finance specialists be referred to as treasurer.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to approve resolution twenty-twenty oh two, again with the change to the wording in the resolution. The job, the job title discussion, all in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the check signing authority is next, resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-five.
Move to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-five regarding check signing authority and procedures, with the same language requiring finance specialist to change to treasurer.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-five, with the same change to the wording of the job title, discussion, all in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. Okay, off the update, appointment of fire department chief and officers, and recommend appointing Andy Sweeney as chief, Mike Stern assistant chief, Tim Miller secretary, Matt Ellison as treasurer.
I'll make the motion to appoint the following fire department chief and officers, Andy Sweeney as fire chief, Mike Stern as assistant chief, Tim Miller secretary, and Matt Ellison treasurer.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, to appoint those named individuals to those positions in the fire department, discussion. All in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And designation of polling place, since the community areas, or the area center changed their name, is now to Green Roof Area Center, where you're putting in a new resolution twenty-twenty oh three, designating that named facility as the polling place.
Make the motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty oh three, designation of polling place.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to approve resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-three, discussion, all in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And chapter one ordinance, violation of misdemeanor or petty misdemeanor. Bill, you're clearing that up for us, then, I've often wondered.
Probably, probably no one else ever wondered about it, but it was. Well, see, I, I just wanted it to be clearly stated that unless the violations are designated as petty misdemeanors, that they're misdemeanors.
They are misdemeanors. Okay.
So this will be posted, and then you will take action on it in a minute.
Yep. Understood, all right, and then the next one is another changer, Mr. Spooner, about the license listings, types.
This, this is basically a restatement of our entire liquor ordinance, I think I'm in the right place here. And some of the language in our liquor ordinance was, was outdated. And so we just basically went through it to bring it current with state law. And, and we kept, we kept in things that, we had some unique things in our ordinance, but we kept those in, but tried to otherwise update it to kind of follow along with, with state law.
Same thing, it has to be posted.
Yep. All right, thank you, old business, patient Chuck. The M P I expansion project.
Yeah, the M P I expansion project continues to move forward. Contractor continues to work out pre-treatment facilities, the wastewater plant. In addition, the casing pipeline of the railroad has been installed. They're waiting for the casing spacers to get there, unless those are in, they'll be able to finalize that, and they will start working on the next boring from the lift station over to the north of the railroad. So that project, as I mentioned in the past, will continue to move forward over the next, basically several months till it's completed. In your pack is a pay request number six, for all work completed during December, in a bonus of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
Make the motion to approve pay estimate number six, in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents, payable to Eagle Construction Company Incorporated.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, to approve passment number six, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight thirty-nine, ninety-two, payable to Eagle Construction Company Inc., discussion, all in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. Two thousand and eighteen street improvement project.
Yeah, the work on the two thousand and eighteen street improvement project is, has wrapped up for the year. It'll resume again next spring with some of the seeding and final pavement. During the month of December, they did get some additional work done, some lining, some sewer lining that was involved in the project, as well as some fencing and some other miscellaneous items, so. In your pack is a pay request number seven, in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Move to approve payment estimate number seven, the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, fifty-four cents, payable to boss plumbing and heating.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to approve payment estimate number seven, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-four cents, payable to boss plumbing and heating, discussion, all in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. Airport tea hanger.
Yes, they did start the construction of the airport tea hanger last month. They were able to get the footings in and do some initial earthwork, and get, basically get the site ready so they can start the construction of the actual tea hanger. The building has been ordered, and they plan to mobilize, last I heard, towards the end of February to start the actual construction of the tea hanger, so. In your pack is, excuse me, is a copy of pay request number one for that project, in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Move to approve payment estimate number one, the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. One hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, ninety-six cents, payable to boss plumbing and heating.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to approve payment estimate number one, one ninety-six, eight eight, one ninety-six, payable to boss plumbing and heating, discussion, all in favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the next one is downtown revitalization, we have a couple options to pick from for the next phase. Chuck, you want to give us an update there?
Yeah, this is coming back, as the council may recall, Janet submitted a proposal, sort of with a, a pretty in-depth approach to complete phase two of the project. Based on our discussion, we went back to Janet and asked her to look at a couple different options, and try to accomplish the same thing. So basically, she laid out two different options, option one's the advisory committee approach, where essentially the city would establish an advisory committee, and sort of walk through the process of coming up with some drafted preferred alternatives. Throughout the several, with the advisory committee, as well as a workshop. Basically, she's looking at that to be about a thirteen thousand dollar process, timeline-wise, depending on when, how fast the advisory committee could be established. You know, she's looking at hopefully being able to complete that, you know, sometime in the spring or the summer, by the time we get through the process. She's thinking that may, may do in time for it. The second option is fairly similar, it's, it's, it does involve that, and gets into also including some broad community engagement, with some surveys, and a community workshop, with really the goal, once again, of coming up with the final project, is have a summary of a couple of alternatives for the downtown. But either of these approaches, really the next step, if it continues to move forward, to get into a phase three, which is an assessment of the alternatives, which would include developments, some cost estimates, more in-depth feedback on the alternatives from businesses and property owners and so forth, so. Including funding sources, tax inflation, issues for the states, you know, towards the end of the year, so. So a couple of different options to move forward, to try to move the project along.
Is there a funding for this, or is this another reserve?
Yeah, the funding is us, basically.
It wasn't much of it. That'd be just interesting to find out, after you spend all this money, what you're coming up with. The same thing, that you want somebody to do something, but nobody wants to do it?
I mean, that's the question, if we spend this money, thirteen thousand dollars, seventeen-nine now, are we willing to commit, to commit three, four, five hundred thousand dollars in the future to actually implement these things? Or more?
Or more, yeah, that's.
I think the one proposal now is requesting like one point six million.
I feel like it's hard to make that decision, when we don't want, don't know what these things are. I don't know.
You know, until, we did have a one endeavor, or whatever you want to call it, where they were gonna put the senior care downtown. Now that's gonna be meant openly by clinics. Until somebody comes and says, I have a great idea, and I have a developer, and a financier, and I want to do this. Oh, are we just?
If you remember correctly, the first ten thousand came out of this, out of the EDAF fund. The EDAF board director said, there's no reason to do this until you have a reason to do it. My whole thing is, is that the housing study?
Yeah, I thought that was, I thought that was the housing study.
This was too.
Okay. Yeah, the, well, when the first group came, that was taken out of EDAF. That was, that one went no place. I, I can see both ways here, you know, waiting around for something to happen, or, or being somewhat proactive in having something, and knowing what the community or the city wants to do with the downtown, which would be the, the next approach here. I'm not sure, I want someone to come in and just say, this is what we're going to do, and be at their beck and call, or whatever, which, you know, as long as it means zoning and all that, they could, they could basically do, if we have a plan, similar to, you know, to cities doing a comprehensive plan. It puts the things in place for things to happen according to the way you want or envision it being, rather than the way somebody else does.
I mean, I, I think that, especially. I mean, I, I think that, especially because we're at the point where we're hiring a new city administrator and economic development director, that it would be a good idea for us as a city, as a community, to have that vision for what we want our downtown to be, to look like, so that our new director that we hire knows what they're working with and has something to move towards, I guess.
My biggest thing is if you had, get an advisory committee with up to 20 people, depending on who you get, you give me the list of names, I can tell you the conclusion. How much are you doing it for? How much are you doing it for? Really?
Less than 13?
Oh, I don't, to me, there's, it's pointless unless you're going to do something. I mean, unless you're going to do something, instead of pointing, somebody should do something. Doesn't make any sense to me. Everybody goes, we have to do something downtown, but they'd be like, you should do this. It's all, doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, exactly what Sean said, and I've been saying, if we as a council say, you know what? We will throw in money for this, I don't care, you don't have to put a number on it. If you can guarantee me, or not guarantee me, give me the good vibe that says, we're going to do this, we're going to throw some money, we're going to take it, some of our reserves, we're going to push for whatever, I don't care how you do it. Then I'll be for it.
So, I think what comes to mind for me is, I can't remember the, which town it was, off the top of my head, I have to go back and look at my notes, but somewhere down south, at one of the LMC conferences, I was talking with a lady, and her community, her city built a community center, but it was a community-driven project. And so that's where something like this becomes beneficial, because it's no longer just the council or the government directing a project, it's getting everybody in the community on board and saying, this is what we want as our city. And so then you pull out like more private investors and, you know, other people that are willing to make an investment when they can see a vision of what that would look like and, and what could be done with our downtown. So, I mean, I think that this could be money well spent, but, you know, again, you know, there's probably some examples of other times when the money has been spent on, you know, something and nothing was done with it, and then, yeah, if you're not going to do anything, then it becomes a waste. But I feel like if something's going to happen, it needs to be driven by the community and not just the council. But I think that we can certainly have a hand in facilitating that.
Unless they come up with saying, well, you got to tear these buildings, I don't do it. We're like, well, we just wait for something to do that.
Well, yeah. When you tear them down, you have to fill that space. Well, you know, i- i- if that's, you know, if we went through this process and that's what everybody said to do is tear down the buildings, then I guess that's what we do. I've often said, you can't make your city something that it's not, you can't make your downtown something that your community is not going to have a buy-in. They're not going to be, you know, if they're not part of that process, they'll get to where you want to go with your downtown, and you might as well not do anything at all.
That's where the, the 20 people would be. Would set this whole thing, you know, you got the same 20 people that they did for the first part, but that's not your community anyway.
And that's what I like about the option two, I mean, it's $4,900 more, but it does include a larger workshop including 40 people along with an entire city survey, which brings in perception of everyone involved. 18 grand is a lot of money. If by making this vote, we're committing to actually doing something at the end of the day, it's not quite a drop in the bucket, but somewhat insignificant in the grand scheme.
I mean, it does say that broad community engagement could be worked into phase three if we went with the first option, but.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Pay for it in the, in right away.
I mean, I think option one and option two, a lot of the difference are basically just in the, in the dollars. Option one, you know, you can do an optional community survey if you want, you're just evolving, you know, more people with option two, option 20. If you pick the right people, you're still going to accomplish the same thing you did with, you know, 20 more people and another couple thousand dollars.
I know what the board would say to this, but can we, can the EDAF budget pay for some of this again? Technically, it'd be nice if it was EDAF, or you said it was in California. I know those funds there. That are supposed to be allocated for revitalization or loans for businesses and so forth.
When does EDAF meet again?
The 21st of January. The agenda will go on tomorrow or Wednesday.
Can we send this to EDAF or recommend, to make a recommendation?
It'd be nice that we have an EDAF order, it might be some positive waiting, so you pair it, so you get much better.
That too.
And get, hit their herd line of thought on this also. I'm in favor of tableing this till we have a city administrator and get their line of thought also.
Maybe send it to EDAF in the interim?
Sure, they can look at the two options and get some opinions or.
Some opinions, you know, my, my fear is that, you know, they'll come back with a.
We don't want to pay for it?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I, I'd just like to put this, you know, off to the side for now and, you know, they could certainly, you know, discuss it. It's not that we're going to do the recommendation, because we're not ready to act on it, from what I understand.
Well, downtown is just you know, a lot of businesses, if you're going to invest the money, you're probably going to build on the new downtown, which is the White House. And let's just say, we had a lot of people would love to have a theater like Colts Greenhouse, or even a step nicer. But if somebody's going to put that kind of investment, it's not probably going to come downtown.
Well, then that would possibly come out of the, this, this, this process. We're still going to have those areas sitting here that.
Right.
Do something with.
Well, on the road, it can be condos or something.
Well, it could be, you can't turn your back on it and say.
I don't think the city's going to tear down a block and build a condo because we need something downtown.
So you already made up your mind that even if we did this, you're not going to do it.
We don't have, I mean, we got plenty and barely tear down if you build it.
I, yeah, we're going to keep, keep this on our agenda this year and, and you can tell Janet we're still mulling it over and.
So would you like it to be tabled until administrators hired, or did you want it to be at EDAF?
Well, you know, I, I like EDAF, you know, thoughts anyway, I don't necessarily want a recommendation from them, just kind of a sense of what they think.
Should we bring it back, council meeting, two council meetings from now?
Sure.
For a month? Give everybody a thought process.
We'll put it up February 10th.
Okay.
So it doesn't leave?
Yep. Okay, item E, should we talk about after the closed session, yep, and then item H, we're down to the H 146. Okay, we just get a verbal report here, I don't think we're in any action, but as to where we're at with the timeline there?
No, and I think Jen already kind of hinted earlier, what Liza is kind of expecting is, you know, to get that overall of that that document done, it's going to be the, the interview conclusions from when she was here, the job description and Salvera Range will be a part of that. So until we get, we work on that in the working session and then come back, you know, get that to her, to the Salvera Range, I will contact Anne to do that before the 23rd. That's really all, have any on that topic?
All right, and we have the informational, we have the fire report, which was already given verbally, the notice of the Fairness Line Planning Commission meeting coming up in regards to Brett and Maria Omen, which Ron, I understand Brett is a pilot, so if you're ever looking for more board members for the airport commission.
Absolutely.
Put his name down. And Bill there from the, or a notice from Stearns County on the 2019 road maintenance payment, Stearns County municipal league meeting coming up on the 21st. And I believe that's it for informational. We will first do the item 11, the closed session to discuss an offer on real property, so we can get Chuck to comment here. That's all right. And ask Chuck and Ron and Melinda, Jennifer, you can leave. And Bill, you'll have to stick around, I don't think this is going to take too long, Ron?
Nope, this is going to take a couple minutes.
Couple minutes? Okay. And then the rest of you can. Vamos. But we are researching this in council meeting.